All right, I'd like to call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for the July 10, 2018 meeting. Please take a moment of silence with me, please. Please stand for the Plague of Allegiance.
Plague of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm glad to see everybody here. We're kicking it off today. So this ought to be a plow uphill year. I'm calling it the plow uphill year. So we've done a lot of hard work, so we got a lot of hard work, but now we're seeing kind of the top of the hill, but we've got to keep plowing. So we've got to keep working hard and keep moving the plow forward. So if everybody works together, everybody puts their input in like they have for the last year, we'll get there. So I'm optimistic. I'm excited about where we're going. I think you're going to see some things we're going to do this year to get the city in a better financial position and get some charter changes and procedures in place to really start solidifying what we should be doing financially as we go forward. So with that, I think you're going to allow us then to focus on what we should focus on, which is economic development. So once you take care of the housekeeping things, you've got your policies in order and your admin in order and your finances in order and you're managing that properly, then we can focus on the good stuff, which is let's take the city where it needs to go, right? So that's why I'm optimistic. We need to present a positive outlook of this city because this city's got a lot to offer. So like I said last time, we're working on a very good way of presenting this city. So we're going to put a professional marketing video together to talk about all the good things we've got to offer. We're going to probably be interviewing a bunch of people on staff. Maybe the community wants to be involved, so if you do, let Randy and Rick know because we're going to put a video together. So you see people in the community talking about why you come here, why it's great to live here, why it's great to have business operations here. And so, you know, when somebody sees that, that's part of telling the story. They want to kind of make the connection to the community, you know? Why do I want to come to Bristol, Virginia? So we've got to personalize it a little bit, so get involved in that, and hopefully it'll be put together in the next month and we'll have something really nice to show. So with that said, any other council member comments on anything?
One thing. I want to thank both the Bristol Little League and the Parks and Rec Department because this last weekend, they had a state tournament for the girls softball for eight, nine, 10-year-olds as well as the 11- and 12-year-olds at Highland View and Eastern Little League and Sugar Hollow. And they did a great job coming in over the weekend, making sure the fields were ready and clean. And particularly, I want to thank the Little League for bringing that to Bristol. I know not only did we have people here at those games, but I went up to the Bristol Pirates game and saw quite a few of those young ladies out there enjoying other things in Bristol, so I appreciate those efforts.
Okay, anything else? All right, Randy, anything?
I just want to remind you, there's one item that we need to add to the agenda, but...
Yeah, I'll do that just once you get done with your general comments.
Sure. In regards to my comments, I was just made aware within the past week to 10 days that we had a police officer here in the city who actually saved the life of an individual. I won't go into what happened, but Officer Maurice Harris, he's a relatively new officer, been with the city about a year, acted quickly, saved the life of an individual, and I know that probably has made a complete difference, not only in her life, but her family's life as to what could have happened. I want to echo Mr. Hartley's comments. Virginia Little League did have a softball tournament here. There's probably close to 2,000 folks here, I think, overall, between 18 teams. They spent from, some folks arrived on Wednesday night and probably checked out of their hotels this morning. So we had more than usual activity with hotels and restaurants this weekend, which is good for the city of Bristol. And one thing that has come up in the media within the past week or so was an item in regards to the landfill gas at our landfill, and there's been some comments out in social media, and I've received some in public. We, the city, has not paid for this gas company to come into the city. They came to the city, proposed a project to the city, the city agreed to it. Once certain gas volumes are met, then the city would receive some payment after those gas volumes are met. At this point, the gas has not been producing enough in order for the city to be paid anything, but the city has not given any cash whatsoever to this company that has been here in the city. With that being said, let's start the meeting.
All right, first thing we need to talk about, we need to modify the regular agenda. Randy's informed we need to add a legal executive session to the regular executive session. We have an item one. So I'd need a motion to change the agenda to add the legal executive session underneath the personnel executive session.
So that's just to, we just go in executive session once, but for two reasons.
But for two reasons, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, I get a motion, Mr. Hartley, second by Mr. Osborne. So with that said, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, before I read the executive session, Mr. Conko and Ms. Dotson, both in the room, I guess, I see them. Okay, so you two will be the ones that need to position yourself first for board discussion, board interviews. All right, with that said, item one, executive session pursuant to 2.2-3711.a.1 Code of Virginia 1950, as amended, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, princi's personnel. And also, executive session pursuant to 2.2-3711.a.7 Code of Virginia 1950, as amended, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. In consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, princi's legal counsel. So I need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion. We go into executive session. In second.
All right, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, on to item number two, consider approval of city manager contract. Council discussion, I'll go ahead and take this discussion. We did spend quite a bit of time, we finally have the contract of the city manager finalized. So the highlights of the contract, it will be available for the public to review the details. We have a city manager/interim city attorney contract. It's Randall Eads. His compensation and benefits and all will be spelled out, you know, in the contract, but it's for obviously a one-year term from July 1st till June 30th of next year. And so that's basically the contract, and it's got two appendixes in the contract. One appendix is how we will appraise and grade his performance, and the other appendix is that he will, his benefits are no different than city employees. In other words, he is under the exact same benefit package, no special offerings to him as a benefit, so it's any city employee's benefit package is the appendix B. So that is the contract. Other council comments?
I just appreciate the work Mr. Eads has done. I mean, when I look at this and as I've told my fellow council members, and I'll say here, you know, I do believe that ultimately we do need to separate those two positions out between city manager and city attorney. You know, right now, it's the one year for the interim, partly to do that because I think it's a better thing to do it, but partly, I know Mr. Eads does a good job in both, and both are very time-consuming things, and I'd hate to see him get burned out along the way because I appreciate the work he's done. Also, you know, just when you look at this, one thing that I brought up, and while I'd like to see Mr. Eads move into the city and become a resident, I understand why, and I'm not going to hold that against my vote, although I do feel that it's probably a good precedent to say that. I think, you know, we've kind of gotten astray from that, and when we look at the charter maybe down the road, we can make that part of a longer-term solution. So, it's my comment.
So I think council was pretty much in a consensus agreement that Randy's done a very nice job for us as city manager, and he's shown that he's been able to manage the city attorney duties within the city manager responsibilities, but as soon as we feel like that that's grown to the level that it doesn't, you know, make sense for us anymore because of the level of activity or his level of economic development responsibilities are growing as city manager, and he's taken us to a different place that we'll need to eventually have a city manager and a city attorney. But we don't feel like where we sit today, that's necessarily the right timing, but that is at least a vision of where we think it will go eventually. So it's working for us so far. We're in a good spot. We've got a good person at the helm, and so we need to give him our support. And I would tell you, he's overachieved and beyond my expectations because the goals we put in front of Randy Eads in January were not easy and small potatoes. They were pretty comprehensive. There was a lot to get done, but he took us through a budget cycle and did that as well as I've seen done, and then he did a bunch of other things very well within those goals. So I'm comfortable that we've got a good person and the contract is reasonable and fair for where we are today. So with that said, I guess any other council discussion? Okay, we do have one person signed up for public comment on this item, which is number two, which is Michael Pollard.
Thank you, gentlemen, and the council. My name is... Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. While I don't have any real concerns that things will be done correctly, I would be remiss if I did not point out that the contract was not made available to the public to give relevant comments before the council vote. Thank you.
You want to go make a copy of the contract and hand it to Mr. Pollard before we vote? I have no problem doing that.
At this point, I still would not be able to make the intelligent discussion concerning the contract. I'd rather be in advance.
We can take time and let you read it, and we can keep talking about it if you'd like.
Now, if I'd gotten a copy before the executive session, I would have plenty of time to read it, but...
We can go back in executive session if you want to.
I think Nancy's too hungry to put up with that.
All right, no other person signed up for public comment. So do I have a council motion on the contract?
I move that we approve the contract as written.
Okay, motion by Mr. Osborne?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Hartley. Please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, next item, consider, this is number three, consider appointments to boards and commissions. So we did spend time interviewing the candidates for two basic boards. One was the Industrial Development Authority, the other was the Social Services Board. And so here's, and we discussed obviously the city council feels for the commissions. So as far as the Industrial Development Authority, these are the three applicants that we're recommending and we're going to vote on for putting on the Industrial Development Authority, Paul Conko, Daniel Marciano, and Carly Thompson. So those three came out of the Industrial Development Authority applications as the three we want to be seated on the Industrial Development Authority. I will say that Langley Shazer was very much impressive to us. He also applied for the Planning Commission, and during our discussions, we noticed that we did have one available opening for the Planning Commission that was a recent resignation, which was Bill Rayteague. And we do need to take action on that, and Langley has planning commission experience coming to us. So we, and he applied for that position as well, so our recommendation now is we're going to put Langley Shazer on the Planning Commission as the last seat there. The next one was Social Services Board. We had basically three applicants, one withdrew, so we interviewed the other two, which is Yula Wheeler and Vyse Dotson. Both have our approval to be recommended and seat on the Social Services Board. So those are what we agreed to for the board. So at this point, is there any other council discussion?
I would just like to say that I appreciated that everyone that we had come in for IDA, were all very impressive, and they made it a hard decision. You know, we didn't decide to reappoint Mr. Ashley, and I don't know if I speak for everyone, maybe I'm just speaking for myself. I appreciate the service he's put in there and the service he's put in for the city over many years. I appreciate that he was willing to serve again and what he's done, you know, previously, so I appreciate that. But I'm excited about the people we have. They're all innovative, forward-thinking, and they'll be able to help us move in some good directions.
Absolutely. You know, it's nice to see that the people's willing to step up and serve on these boards and committees. I mean, we've struggled, I've been on council for 19 months now, and, you know, we've seen our days where we've struggled to even get one applicant when we needed six. And to have this many applicants and strong ones at that is really impressive. It's a sign of, you know, things being more positive and people getting excited, wanting to, you know, be part of the solution, and I really appreciate that. So I want to thank everybody that applied. I wished we could have seated everyone, but, you know, we just don't have the vacancies to do that. But just keep those applications on file, and as the boards open up, we can get them filled.
So the last thing I'll say is the people who applied, the skill set is definitely there. We were very impressed with the applicants. Reach out to people you know in the community because this city needs help managing our way forward other than just us and the few people you see here. So if you know somebody that's really good, that's willing to serve, you know, let them know because these seats will become open sometimes through the year and next year. So we just need to keep feeling good people on these boards because these are important. I mean, don't diminish the importance of these boards. They're really important. Big decisions are made on these committees and boards. All right, with that...
Just kind of follow up. I think there was 14 different people this time, and that, as you said, I mean, sometimes we struggle just to find one or two people. So I appreciate everyone's willingness to serve and also appreciate the diversity of background and talent they bring. I mean, there's a lot of skill in all these people, and I also appreciate them taking the time out to the ones that we interviewed to come and talk to because, you know, I think as we've talked about, one of the things is they clearly care about the community, clearly want to see us move forward, and this is how we're going to do it, by working together and getting new ideas and different ideas in here.
Okay, so I'll move on to the council board seats real quick, and then we'll vote. So on the council committees and boards, we made a couple of changes. Basically, Neil Osborne's going to take all the board seats that Archie Hubbard had, with the exception of the Joint Planning Commission is going to be moved to Mr. Fleener, and the Rhythm and Roots is going to be taken by Neil. Neil really wants to be on that Rhythm and Roots committee. He expressed a high interest there, so we're going to make that swap. And then Bill and I are going to swap the Birthplace of Country Music and the Bristol Convention and Visitors Bureau that I was on is going to go to Bill, and the People's Inc. board seat is going to come to me. So those were the changes. Everything else stays the same. And when we make a motion here, since it wasn't on the official sheet, we'll do the Planning Commission vote next council meeting, so Langley Shazer will be presented. Is that what you want to do here?
We'll have to, we'll take that up the next meeting. I'll have to go update you all.
Okay, so the motion needs to say Paul Conko, Daniel, Carly for the IDA, and then Yula and Vyse for the Social Services Board.
Okay, so you ready for a motion? Okay, I move that we approve the appointments to the Industrial Development Authority and the Social Services Board as presented, as well as the council manic appointments as presented.
I get a motion, Mr. Hartley. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second, Mr. Wingard? Please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, next item, number four, consider adoption of code of ethics for council members. Staff report.
Counsel, over the past several weeks, we've had discussions in regards to the code of ethics for council members. I've proposed a code of ethics to council that I believe incorporates exactly what council desires for council to do and how to present themselves in public and dealing with the public. That has been part of the package. I think Mr. Pollard may have had enough time to read the code of ethics, I hope, and so we've had some internal discussions on this matter, and I believe the code of ethics as presented incorporates everything the council desires.
Okay, I have one person signed up for number four, and that's Nancy Morni. Okay. Are any council discussion? All right, I'll say from my perspective on the code of ethics, it's general good business practices to have a good code of ethics in place. I will say that's what got BBU in trouble. If you had a good code of ethics in place and everyone had to read it and sign it and understand them, then chances are they would know that they can't go off and do certain things, and it might have saved that organization from a number of problems. But every organization needs it. We're no exception. So there's a certain way to carry yourself out in public and in front of the media and within chambers and when you're dealing with the community and conflict of interest are in play. So you can't, you know, have any biases or any financial dealings that you may potentially be voting on, that you could have a vested interest in. So all those are part of the code of ethics, and so I think they're important, and I think this establishes another, what I call, policy that we really need as a city to say, we want to do things right. We're not just a city. We want to do things correctly. We want to be professional, and we want to do things the right way, and this is just another item we needed to get wrapped up in that perspective. So with that said, like a motion and a second from council to adopt the code of ethics.
I move that we adopt the code of ethics.
All right, I get a motion by Mr. Osborne?
Second.
Second, Mr. Wingard? Okay. Please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item five, consider approval of investment policy. Staff report.
Mayor Mumpower and members of city council, I'm here for excitement. The city of Bristol is in a good position now to invest some idle funds that are sitting in our operating fund. I think I have the support of our city manager and our CFO to move forward with an investment policy. This is the second time I've presented this to you, and tonight I am asking for a motion to approve the investment policy.
All right, so we've discussed this a little bit, so I want to make sure this is in perspective. So the city has never been in a position to really think about the investment, but we do have some cash reserves we're building up, and so we do have to now consider what do we do with some idle cash that we wouldn't necessarily need to pay operating costs, you know, month to month. And so the investment policy is established to provide the guidance to do that. So when you read that policy, you'll find that, you know, we're going by some very conservative investment vehicles that the state of Virginia by law allows, and any transactional movement of funds in and out requires, you know, two-person integrity basically, so it's not one person that can move funds in and out. So with that, we've got to make sure we create strategic liquidity. In other words, you can't put your money in a vehicle that ties it up for a period of time where we might need the cash, so we've got some priorities laid out to where liquidity's important for us, for sure. It's more important for us than, say, the interest rate we're getting on the investment. So we've pulled all that into the policy, so the treasurer has the legal authority to oversee it, so she's put together a very nice policy, and it's a breath of fresh air, I think, that we can now start thinking about putting some money aside and earning at least some interest on the cash we've got until we need those funds for purposes that we vote on. So with that said, what's the pleasure, council?
I make a motion, we approve the investment policy.
I'll second.
Okay, I get a motion by Mr. Wingard, second by Mr. Hartley. Please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item six, consider allowing city manager to enter into contract with Prochem for the purpose of acting as fiscal agent for American Merchant. Staff report.
Counsel, as you know, we've been working with American Merchant since June of last year in order to get their facility up and running. This past fall, American Merchant applied for a grant through the Appalachian Regional Commission, the amount of $500,000, where the city is required to act as the primary applicant in order to receive those federal funds. They did receive the federal funds, and the city will receive a $7,500 for the administration of the grant. The city issued an RFP for the project and received only one response from Prochem. The contract is written as a three-party contract and requires Prochem to supply the wastewater treatment facility, while the city shall act as the fiscal agent. American Merchant remains responsible party per the contract. And if you look on the very last page of the contract, it is spelled out in the contract that the city, and I'll read that exactly, states by signing below, and this is for the city of Bristol, Prochem, and American Merchant, by signing below, you acknowledge that the city of Bristol is a fiscal agent and has no responsibility for the payment of the proposed system. American Merchant shall be solely responsible for the payment of the system outlined in this proposal. Furthermore, Prochem releases the city of Bristol, Virginia from any liability on this contract, as the city is only acting as a fiscal agent in this transaction between Prochem and American Merchant. I will say that I had to have several meetings with Appalachian Regional Commission to get this contract worked out to this degree. Once we explained the situation the city's in, they understand that that's a huge liability for the city if, for whatever reason, things did not go as planned with American Merchant. So we have things at this point where I feel like the city of Bristol's in a very good position in regards to this contract and any liability associated with it.
Okay. All right, we have one person signed up for public comment, Michael Pollard.
Thank you, gentlemen, and the council. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. My concern with this contract is simply that it's a very detailed contract, and I do very much appreciate the entirety being made available to the public. The, on page five of 26, the contract specifies that the...
Thank you, gentlemen, and council. Here's Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. My concern with this contract is simply that it's a very detailed contract, and I do very much appreciate the entirety being made available to the public. On page five of 26, the contract specifies that the capacity of the system will be sufficient for 16 hours a day to eight-hour shifts. And while this may simply be the metrics that are used for determining the capacity, my concern is whether or not the equipment will be sufficient for three eight-hour shifts should they have the operating capacity of the facility to support such.
Yeah, Mr. Pollard, in regards to that, I think what the issue at this point is, is one, they have to have something to measure, something by, as far as the minimum requirement. And I think that it's going to be sufficient for the 24-hour shift. Prochem is well aware that they want to run a 24-hour facility out there, but I think this is what has, is what they decided to measure it by.
And I'll add to that. I think, you know, this quote in contract was not written in isolation. You know, there was professional engineers that specked it out, along with, BBU is involved directly with the specifications to make sure that the coverage of production with the design of the waste treatment could be satisfied so that the intake and the outtake of the water and how it's processed would be compliant with, you know, BDQ and all the environmental regulations. So, those requirements, I would say, were studied very, very much in detail by BBU and the PEs to make sure it was adequate for the operation. So, all we can do as non-experts is make sure that, you know, they did their job properly. But we did do that due diligence.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, no one else signed up for item six? Any other council discussion?
Appreciate the city attorney's work, city manager. I don't know which hat you had on, probably both of them, in reviewing this and making sure to minimize any risk or liability to the city going forward, so.
Okay, anything else? All right, what's the pleasure, council?
Make a motion that we allow city manager to enter into the contract with Prochem for the purpose of acting as a fiscal agent for American Merchant.
Second.
All right, get a motion by Mr. Hartley, second by Mr. Osborne. Please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item seven, discussion on rules and procedures for city council.
Counsel, this is, I know we're getting late into the night, and I intended on having a more detailed discussion about this, but I think there were two times, maybe in either late 16 or early 17, when this rules and procedures for city council was presented, and it was either tabled or not discussed at some point. But under our charter, section 4.04 of the charter, it states that the city council shall, the council shall, subject to the provisions of this charter, adopt its own rules of procedure about ordinance. And as we discuss this in the upcoming year, I did not have enough time to get this out for the public notice that's required for an ordinance. But at this point, you all have seen the rules and procedures that have been presented in the packet. I think the rules and procedures are relatively straightforward for us to conduct the meetings and how we would want the meetings to be conducted. If you have any comments, I'll be more than happy to address any of those issues this time.
Well, I'd just add that, you know, it came up the first time and was tabled, and then the second time was tabled because Councilman Steele had resigned due to health reasons. So, we wanted to wait till after somebody had filled that position. So, now we have two different council members since it was last considered. But, you know, part of the reason it was brought up before was exactly what you said because the charter says we shall do it. But I also think it's in the past few months, some different things that have come up at meetings, just knowing what the rules are, we clarify that. And I've had some comments from people, you know, regarding that. So, I think it's a good thing, just like the ethics policy we approved tonight, to have the rules laid out for ourselves and everyone else to know. And that way, when there's any kind of question, then we know, you know, where to look, so.
Any other comments?
Well, you've got to have rules and procedures to function in a manner that flows. And so, I have no problem with any of this. I think it's needed. And I've seen nothing, you know, as far as the policies and procedures that, it's not just common anyway. I mean, so, you know, everybody has to live under rules and order.
Yeah, and, you know, I would think, and at least when we first brought this up, I think at the time, the thought was that every year during the reorganizational meeting, we could reaffirm the rules. If we needed to change them, that would be the time to change them. I mean, there's nothing necessarily set in stone, but if we see something along the way, we could make the changes as needed. But I think the bigger thing is that we need something in place because when I asked about it, it was nothing had ever been written down, and the charter says clearly we shall have rules, and they weren't clear for everybody to see.
I think this is good. This gives us a roadmap on how to proceed in any situation, and it brings us into line with what the charter requires, anyway. And just like you both have said, as with the ethics, it's common sense, and it's necessary, and it's better to just have it laid out here.
So, a couple of things I'll say is I think, like, under section three, Order of Business, the agenda format for regular meetings, you know, we need to think about that probably a little bit more. I don't think we follow this as it's laid out here in this order. Like, tonight, we had an executive session right out of the chute prior to these other items that you see on here. We have had public comment at the end. I've had community people wanting to do it at the beginning, which we need to think about that because it's laid out here, I guess, near the beginning. So, I think we need to, housekeeping, just clean that up, how we think it flows best. On attendance quorum of council, I mean, there are times where we can't, I mean, we physically can't come to all the committee meetings. So, I think saying shall, but there needs to be, you know, we at least have to notify city manager that we can't attend for travel reasons or something, maybe to, you know, because there are extenuating circumstances that come up on this item. I think that was all I had. Yeah, that's all I had, I think, the big ones. On the ceremonial key to the city, can we make it a little bit nicer key than what we've done in the past?
I'll see what I can do.
It was, I don't know about y'all, but it was a little bit embarrassing what the key looked like, but I think we could do a little bit better job on that. Not a lot, but just a little bit, since we hand that out to people that are, people we want to talk about the city. All right, so any other discussion? Just work on those couple of things, and we'll look at another draft and then decide how we want to proceed on it. All right, let me find my place again here. What's the next discussion item?
Item eight.
See, item eight, motion is to table, is that correct?
I make a motion to table it.
Okay, motion to table item eight by Mr. Wingard.
My second.
Okay, second by Mr. Hartley. Please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Item nine, discussion of charter changes for the 19 General Assembly session.
Counsel, as I know, last year, we discussed charter changes and updating ordinances, and at this point, it's time to start taking a serious look at not only the charter, but the ordinances that we have in place. I think on July 5th, I began, or July 3rd, I'm sorry, I began sending each charter section that pertains to certain departments and individuals within the city that would have some say-so in that particular portion of the charter, those charter sections, so that they could take a look at that charter to see if anything needed to be amended or changed or even just completely deleted in order to update our charter to reflect where we're at as a city today. With that being said, I've gone through the entire charter myself. I've noticed some things that we probably need to consider. Just for example, it appears that most pronouns that are used in the charter refer to he, and we probably should just change that to whatever it's referring to, whether it's chief financial officer, treasurer, city manager, and so make it more neutral. In the past, I know there was discussion as to whether or not to change the timing of city elections to November instead of May. And I think in years past, that was discussed, but I know it's something that you may want to consider at this point. I'm not advocating one way or the other. I think there's pros and cons to both, but that's something that we may want to consider as well. In regards to the ordinances, I've done the same. I've sent out each pertinent section of the ordinances to the department that was in charge of those ordinances, and I'm asking for everyone to give me these changes back by mid-August. That way, I can start presenting. One, I need to do a review to make sure we'd be in compliance with the state law with any changes they suggest. But, and then two, I want to start presenting these changes at one time. We'll have a discussion probably in September on all these changes at both meetings in September and maybe into October, depending on how extensive they are. Then we'll offer the public notice for the changing of the charter and any ordinances, and do everything at one time, either in late October or early November, so that we can get the charter changes to our local representatives in a timely fashion, and they can put those before the committee in January when they go back to Richmond.
Okay. Any council discussion?
So, it'd be not just charter, but we'd revise the ordinances at the same time?
Revised the ordinances at the same time, yes.
Yeah, I believe this is long overdue. We need to act on this, so I'm all in for this one.
You know, I would just suggest one thing. You know, when you go through a major revision like this, you kind of, before you look at the charter, you kind of sit down and go, okay, what are the, what are the big things that we've had issues with in the city that we don't want to have to come back and, you know, readdress those? So, you kind of list them down, and then when you start reviewing the charter, say, are we addressing each one of these, you know, in the charter somewhere? Just to double-check and make sure we're not overlooking, you know, addressing some of our issues, specifically the financial stuff we've talked about, but I'm sure there's going to be a bunch of others. So, that's just a technique I'd recommend you use, and you probably can get our input and all your department head's inputs, is just, you know, just lay down on a piece of paper all the things you can think of that's happened over the last, you know, two to four or five years that you thought didn't make any sense, that that's a problem that we should never do again, and we should put that in the charter to make sure we kind of tighten things up. So, that's kind of my input. Any other discussion? All right, we look forward to that one. And overlook number seven, Nancy. Do you want to actually speak on number seven, the discussion we had, but they don't really have public comment there, but you checked number seven on your sheet. You okay? Are you okay?
On number seven, I pass on.
Okay. All right, with that, we're down to consent agenda, so what's council's pleasure on the consent agenda?
Make a motion we accept consent agenda as it's presented in its entirety.
Second.
All right, get a motion, Mr. Wingard, second by Mr. Osborne. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
You were signed up for seat, non-agenda items, so you want to speak, Nancy Marnie?
Uh-huh.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. The Mendota Trail is not in Bristol, Virginia. Bristol, Virginia has no responsibility and no financial obligation for the Mendota Trail. This is not our issue. This is not our issue. Bristol, Virginia wasted about $1 million and many months on this trail idea, and we ended up giving, giving the trail to the current owners. We should stay completely out of the Mendota Trail. Any positive effect on the city can happen without the city's investment or involvement. All issues should be handled only by the current owners. We are not the owners of that trail. This is not our issue. This should be handled by the owners in Washington County. Bristol, Virginia has nothing whatsoever to do with that trail. It has already cost us way more than it should have. We're out of it. Stay out of it. We don't own it. It isn't in the city. We have no reason whatsoever to be involved in any way, shape, or form. Let the current owner make the decision, just like any other business makes its own decision. Stay out of it, folks.
Thank you, Ms. Marnie. All right, with that said, that's the last item. We're hereby adjourned.